Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, September the 16th, 2013. And in lieu of roll call, I will ask each council member to introduce himself, beginning on my left.
Dave Mobley, City Councilman, Large.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 8.
Mary Hughes or Stewart, District 1. Capico, Councilwoman.
Thank you, council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
...of the United States of America-
America.
...and to the republic where which it stands-
Where it stands.
...one nation, under God, indivisible-
Liberty-
...and justiciable.
Justice.
Our own. Council, I have a special presentation for the daughters of the revolution. Could you come up, please? This is Constitution Week, whereas September the 17th, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2013 to be Constitution Week. In the City of Beach Grove, we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the farmers or the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Beach Grove on the 17th day of September in the year of our Lord 2013. Here you go, Congress. Would you like to say something?[171.12][171.12](Laughter).
Thank you. We're members of the Samuel Bryan Chapter of Beach Grove, Indiana, which meet at the Beach Grove Library the first Saturday of every month. And we have free genealogy workshops twice a month at the Beach Grove Library Computer Room.
Thank you. (Applause). Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Council members, you've been presented the printed minutes of the meeting dated September the 3rd. The floor is open for comments or questions or corrections. If there are no corrections, comments, or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion, sir.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This time, we will conduct a public hearing pursuant to the 2014 library budget, 2014 Civil City budget for the City of Beach Grove, and the 2013 additional appropriation for local law enforcement. At this time, I'll ask Jeff Peters, our financial consultant, to step forward and go through the process for adoption of the budget and the parameters that the clerk and I have presented for the budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, as always. This is your annual budget public hearing. The primary function of this is for you to get the budget introduced to you, get familiar with it, look through both the expenditure and revenue side of it, and to get impact or input from your taxpayers as to their thoughts on the budget. Process-wise, you have this public hearing, then on October the 7th, I believe, you are scheduled for your adoption hearing. That hearing has to happen at least 10 days after this hearing, which it does. Everything that you're looking forward or for in your budget has been published to the taxpayers per the forms prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. So it's been published two times prior to this. The actions that you take on October the 7th will then be sent to the Marion County City Controller's Office to be shared with the Department of Local Government Finance. They will come back to you probably in January or February of next year with the proposed final budget. The DLGF, as they review what it is that you adopt as a fiscal body, is merely just looking at the revenue and saying you have X number of dollars of revenue to support the appropriations that you all agree that you're going to spend. The appropriations, again, that you're going to have before you to look at are proposed by your administration, and it is your action as the fiscal body to decide of that, what are you going to put forward and approve to be spent to provide the services in 2014, and also to provide the funding for it, which will be the property tax levies of the City of Beach Grove. As you remember previously, you have a maximum levy for the operational funds, which are the general fund. You also spread part of your operational levy into the police and fire pension funds. These are your old pensioners for police and fire, that you are on a pay-as-you-go system until those retirees are fully compensated and no longer drawing benefits. You also have money coming in road and street funds for your local road and street fund, as well as your motor vehicle highway fund. The legislature in this last spring provided additional funding for your motor vehicle highway funds. So you'll see you have a step up in your budget there, which you have money that is coming specifically through state sources for that. The only thing you can spend it on are the motor vehicle highway expenditures. So therefore, that budget will go up, but should help you with some of your street projects and the like. Overall, big picture, you know, the function that I think we serve best for the city is to continue to look at the big picture funding of how you provide those services, how it is that you impose enough tax levy and fee structure so that you can continue to provide these services. We've had those discussions year after year. Earlier in the year, we talked about an increase in sewer rate. And we talked about one of your funding sources back to the last time the sewer rates were set was to provide enough revenue for the operating in the general fund. Part of the revenue source of the general fund is payment in lieu of tax for the utility and a reasonable return on investment. You had to alter those rates in the sewage works in order to be able to provide enough funding for the general fund for this budget. The budget that you'll see before you outside of the MVH fund operationally is pretty similar to last year. And as we talked about before, you know, you're just looking at continuing to provide the services that you currently have, no great expansions of any sort. But you do have sufficient funds between your maximum levy, and of course, we estimate as part of our planning for you what you're going to lose in circuit breaker credits, the things like that. We've looked at your income tax revenues and put those into the budget as well, including the new certified distributions for income taxes that the state put out in late July or early August. And again, big picture overview, you have sufficient money to fund the budget as it's presented. It's pretty much equalized to what the revenue sources are, so you're not going to be picking up a lot of extra funding. Hopefully, you'll be able to maybe accumulate a little more operating balance in your cash or operating cash balance in your funds. But all in all, pretty much a, just continuing to fund the budget and the operations that you have. And like I would say, function for the fiscal body, I think, is a good exercise, is to delve into the budget with your department heads or whoever else you'll have testify before you, but understand fully what it is they're providing in the services to your taxpayers. I always think that's a good way to gauge, you know, how do we decide how much burden are we going to place on certain people in the community? And it all comes back to what is that service that we have to provide? What is that service that we want to provide? So that you have that balance, since that is your job as a fiscal body, to decide how much you're going to take in order to provide these services. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions or anything in general that council would like.
I'm good. Thank you, Jeff.
I just appreciate you explaining more in detail about it, Jeff. It always helps to have a little bit more information rather than just what's in front of us. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Jeff, what we have put together for the council, we can fund.
Yes.
And your projections for the 2013 end-of-the-year budget, you don't see that these budgets are not balanced? You don't see that, do you?
No. The end of 2013, and one of the exercises on those budget forms, because it covers an 18-month cycle, we will look at what we anticipate you're going to end 2013 with, and then what we anticipate you're going to end 2014 with. And pretty much what you're going to end 2013 with, you might gain a little bit to end 2014 with. You don't have a lot of cash on hand, we've talked about that before. But both of those, for all the funds, as we've helped Dan structure in the budget, are positive.
And you stated earlier that the sanitary sewer rate increase was something that the council had to absolutely do.
That is the only way that you'll be able to continue to fund budgets at the level that you're currently at. And same discussion we had in the spring, yeah, those numbers won't change. And, you know, the only way for you to have enough revenue in another source of your common sources that you have today, income taxes will have to be significantly higher, which, you know, we're seeing comeback in income tax distribution statewide. But they're not going to be to a level that you would be able to not harvest that money from the utility. The only other big hit that you've taken over the last several years is when the circuit breaker caps went into effect. When assessed value rises, and if Beach Grove can continue to add to its assessed value and grow it enough, it will start to net-collect more taxes, and you'll have fewer circuit breaker losses. But being that you are in a fixed boundary, you're not going to grow like we see the doughnut cities outside Marion County grow, because they just go and take a whole bunch of area, develop it all. And you're not going to have that convenience. You're going to have to grow inside your geography. So I would say that you will probably never be able to go without those amounts that you harvest from the utility and continue to provide the operations that you do today.
My contention was that the council was right to adjust the sewer rates.
Yes.
I want to ask you a question about stormwater fees, because when the budget cycle is over, I'm going to introduce stormwater utilities, fees. Where would that fall into the budget mix? And this is something that we should do.
It's definitely something that you should do, and I believe I touched on this when we went through the sewer rate increase. Back when the sewer rates were originally established, Beach Grove was part of the Marion County Consolidated Wastewater District. So your taxpayers paid, shouldn't say taxpayers, your ratepayers paid sewage rates into Beach Grove Sewage Works, and they also paid a stormwater fee to Marion County. Between the last time the rates were set and when you reset them this spring, Beach Grove was pulled outside or away from the Marion County Solid Waste or Stormwater Management District. But Beach Grove still has the responsibility to adhere to certain stormwater functions and to pay certain expenses for stormwater. And you have those stormwater needs. What you don't now have, and have not had since you pulled out, is any revenue source going toward those. So part of the sewage fees that had been paid over the last several years were being used to provide both stormwater and sewage works, which is not the optimum way that it should be. It's really, you know, those two should be separated. So when we did the sewer rates, we pulled out all the expenses related to sewer, and we segregated stormwater. So you set rates according to how much expense was there for sewage works. Now you have this other pool of stormwater. Part of it's operational, which isn't a lot, but I'm sure you're going to have some capital needs that are pretty significant over time that you're going to want to collect money for and build into that. So you are going to need to have stormwater fees and to figure out how you're going to set those rates equitably and proportionately going forward. Definitely need to do that, because right now, you have those expenses and liabilities, but you have no revenue source to pay for it.
Thank you, Jeff. Council members, have any other questions?
I'm sorry. I just want to ask about the proposed tax levy and rate.
Mm-hmm.
The effective rate to each person. Can you break that down for me and compare that to what it was last year?
I'll give you the big picture, then I'll see if you want me to dig further and open up my computer and talk about it. Assessed values are not certified until right before the DLGF does their review process, which might be January, February. Sometimes we get them as early as December. So at this point in time, we don't know what the assessed value is, whether it's going up or down. Therefore, the rates, we don't know what those are going to be. What you have before you in the budget documents, and this is the standard convention that everybody uses, and the DLGF will tell you as well that they recommend, is that you lowball your assessed value so that you have artificially high rates when you adopt your budget. So it will look disproportionate from what you actually had certified for 2013. And the reason you do that is, the way the budget laws are written, you are limited to the lesser of what you advertise to your taxpayers, what you adopt as a city, or what the rates turn out to be after the DLGF cuts you back to your maximum levy and then imposes an assessed value that you have no idea what it is. So to keep you at that level where you would continue to harvest your maximum levy, which is what all your neighbors around you are going to do, that rate will be artificially high and look artificially high compared to 2013. What we actually think will happen in actuality, and again, in the planning that we do, because assessed value has been so strange in the last few years, we have just taken it straight across. So your maximum levy has increased by 2.6 percent, which is the average six-year growth in non-farm income. It's a statutory formula that your levy grows by. That amount has gone up 2.6 percent for 2014. So if your assessed value stays the same, then your levy's going to go up that 2.6 percent, as are your rates. If your assessed value will go up 2.6 percent, you're going to get the exact same tax rate as you had in this year for the maximum levy in the operating funds. Your debt levy might fluctuate a little bit, which is the payment on your principal and interest on your outstanding bonds. But actually, I think for 2014, your debt payment's going to go down a little bit, because last year, you established the appropriate operating balance for debt service, and you won't have to establish that for '14, you just have to maintain it. But if you want, I can dig out and give you some perspective on how much per, like, average mortgaged homestead, if you want me to open up my computer and do that.
Out of curiosity, yes.
Sure.
The main point I wanted you to make, you did today, thank you. About, we don't know.
Okay.
You know, my favorite thing.[1284.13][1284.13](Laughter).
Any other questions while I bring them up? Want to get back to me?
Please. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
We had nobody sign up to speak tonight on behalf of the budgets, any of the budgets or the additional appropriation. Is there anybody who's decided they would like to speak who did not sign up?
What happened to the good old days when everybody used to come and talk to the budget?
What I'd like to do with the department heads, when we introduce the budgets, I would like for them to come up and do a brief synopsis of their budget. If nobody has, wants to come and speak, we will close the public hearing, and we will move to new business, and including the introduction of ordinances and resolutions. General Ordinance Number 182013 is up for first reading. And that is the budget for the Civil City of Beach Grove. And before I do, we'll go ahead and let the department heads come up. Mark, do you want to start? This is your budget for the police department.
I guess everybody has a copy of the budget that was published. I have a couple of questions or would like to have some increases. I'm sure everybody else would. The first one increase is in the personal services or salaries. And when this item was added, we had an officer that will go to his next level, which will be first-class patrolman, and that wasn't included in this part of the budget. The budget I'd like to have increased for his salary is $2,323.17.
I was getting a clarification, because- I thought that had been plugged in.
When we did our figures, it didn't show that it was into the salary part of the budget.
It's in there.
His increase was, will be, I think, April of, it's March 9th.
It's in there. Any of them that is going, like, to third-year patrolman, anything like that that is increased is figured into the budget. And the way I calculate, you have more than enough for salaries.
Okay. It just didn't show up when we did the figures.
Personally, I was hoping you guys were going to take the cut.
We're not asking for that.
Yeah, I know.
Then, some of the other part of the budget in our supplies and equipment, it was decreased by $6,850. Our office supplies was $2,000, now it's down to $1,500. Our canine budget was at, is it 600? It was at 1,000. And all these items, we were told that because we have a certain percentage left in our budget, that's the reason it was cut. I can tell you, in our canine, I have made a deal with a supplier that we buy a skidload of dog food, a pallet, and he gives us a discount when we do that. And it just hasn't come into play yet that we buy the dog food. And I was told that it was dropped because we hadn't purchased enough yet. And our cost for canine, the dog food, and we have to buy new leashes occasionally and parrots, hornaces for the dogs, they wear out, they get wet, and our vet bill, this is part of our vet bill. We have two dogs, and they get x-rays occasionally for hip dysplasia, and that's expensive. And these are just costs that are there.
Mark, as I'd like to say, is your budget has increased $25,298 over last year.
Yes, I would agree with that.
You know, I don't know what to tell you. Other places are taking cuts. They're asking, straight across the board, just 10 percent. You guys have not had to take any layoffs, any cuts. You got an increase last year, you're getting an increase this year. So I'm sorry that the budget doesn't meet your specifications. Your overtime has increased to $100,000 in the budget.
But that's not part of the city payment. That's part of the lower coordinate money that is allotted for that. The increase, yes. Gas has gone up. Our gas usage has not. The cost of gas, everybody knows gas went up. The Marion County Dispatch Center used to supply us with an air card system. It wasn't a true air card. They stopped that. Now, we have to pay for air cards. Last year, we didn't know what the budget was for that. The Marion County continued to tell us that it was going to stop. They continued to let it go and let it go. And not until the budget was proposed and approved last year did we find out from Verizon what our cost is. And air cards are $10,000 or something like that to run. Our police computers, that wasn't figured in, that's part of what Dan is saying our increase is. It's true. It's an item that we didn't have budgeted last year, because we didn't know what it was going to be. And it wasn't until late in the year did we know what it was. And like I say, the gas had to go up because we were running out of gas. The overtime, we haven't asked for any increase, but we appreciate that increase. But it is other money than what the city monies are. We have a $50,000 budget for overtime. It's the same, except for what is coming out of either code or load, I'm not sure which one that is. So it's, we're not asking for an increase. We are asking for the same amount in our supply part of it and our personal services. Postage, we had a, the postage was $200. Now it's $100. To get a little personal with that, we mail out to every officer's family that died in line of duty, be it their mother, their father, their daughters, whoever. And I don't think $100 will cover that. Through the year, Christmas cards, anniversaries, when that officer died, and other information. That's, in a budget the size of the city, I'm not so sure that $6,850.50 is that big of a deal. To keep it the same that it was, these services were not- To keep it the same that it was, these services, we're not asking for an increase. We're just asking for the same that they were last year, except for in gas. Gas has gone up. Our air cards, which we had to purchase to be able to use our computers and radio information, that is part of that $25,000 increase that the clerk treasurer is saying that we got an increase in.
Can I comment to your, on the air cards, which was not budgeted last year? Did I not get you enough money to get through the year with air cards?
For this year?
For this past year?
Yes.
This year here? Okay. You was able to. You're calling about a few hundred dollars for, an extra $100 for postage. On a $2,826,660 budget, I think we can find you an extra $100 for postage. I think this is ridiculous. It's a good budget and you got an increase in your budget. You did not cut your budget or get it cut. So, I'm sorry.
There were some items that it got cut in.
Pardon me?
There's some items that it did get cut in.
The budget overall went up $25,000. You did not have to take a decrease.
It was actually an $18,360 increase.
I don't know where you got that at.
It was a $25,210 increase. Then there was a decrease of $6,850.
That must be the new math because I come up with $25,298.
Okay.
Anything else for the council, Mark?
No, that's, those increases just, not an increase, but just to stay the same that our budget was last year with the personal service of canine, the postage and some of those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Rob, did you want to comment on yours?
Mayor, Council, good evening.
Good evening.
Like to thank you for having us up here and I'd be glad to answer any questions for you. Category one, personal services, all the math adds up, all our step increases are included, our longevity's included, everything's down to the T. In category two, we had a couple increases in our budget. One was for medical supplies, which is well-needed. That provides your ALS engines and your ambulances. With the increase in medical supplies and equipment, it had to go up and that's greatly appreciated. Everything else pretty well remained the same. We did increase our garage and motor because our older engines are costing us a lot of money, maintenance, repair, upkeep. Also, with, I'm sorry, garage and motor, our fuel, that's one of the other areas that was increased. Cost of fuel is a variable doing these budgets. It costs a lot of money this year. We had to appropriate some money into our budget for fuel. It did go up, very well appreciated. Our physicals, eval, durations, our drug screen, that money remained the same. Everything else looked very, very good. Air cards were in there. Of course, if everyone doing a budget, electric, water, gas, sewage, we had to have slight increases. I think pretty well 3% was the standard all throughout the county. We did receive another increase this year for maintenance and repairs. That is our engines, equipment. What we want to do is get back to preventative maintenance, make sure all of our apparatus, even our newer apparatus, are on a preventative maintenance schedule, having transmission checks, make sure we do obviously the oils, et cetera. But that's, that's good, good to have in there. And everything else, again, overtime increased. It looks good and very much appreciated. Any questions for me on our budget?
I think the garage and motor, the gasoline is justified because I think you came in front of this council last meeting for appropriation because you're already out of gas money.
That is correct. It's just due to the increase of the ambulance and fire runs and the cost of gas and the spikes. I think we're lucky this, this week here because gas prices went down. But again, it is a variable and it's hard to predict, but we try to keep those predictions in line.
One of the things that, Rob, if you could briefly, we plugged in the budget a position for compliance. And that is going to be shared between fire department and the public works. And I'll have Brad talk about it in a minute, but from the fire department's perspective, how will that be able, how will that help you?
This is going to help us immensely. We're going to be able to have a person out doing fire inspections. And that's one of the areas that we have faulted on, being able to get out in our businesses, do a fire inspection and give the business owner feedback. Sometimes we do go out, we do company-level inspections, but the guys are on duty. It can be very disruptive to a business owner if you have several firefighters coming in, they catch them once they run, they have to leave, come back, and really don't get to spend the time with the business owners here in Beach Grove, telling them what they could do to help make their business safer. So, it's great to have a dedicated person, a dedicated person be able to answer questions about fire codes and any other relative question they may have. Also, they will help support our smoke detector ordinance where the fire department goes out and checks each home, part of it being sold in Beach Grove, to ensure it has an operating smoke detector. So, greatly helps out the fire department and we're very much appreciative.
And we plugged in, somewhere in all of this budget, we had to fit in lease payments for vehicles. So, that come out of the local option income tax?
Yes, that is correct. It really helped us out because we were able to put the necessary money back into garage and motor, vehicles repairs. It took it out of our direct budget and we were able to increase our overtime by 25,000.
I know that when I was fire chief, I really appreciated increases in overtime because one big incident wipes you out.
Absolutely.
And we're back to where we should be, I think, with this budget. So, it's good. That aspect of it is really good.
I'd like to make one comment, Rob. On your budget, it's actually showing a 77-47 decrease in your actual budget. And what I wanted to explain to people, that was due to last year you was budgeted 25,000 for leases. So, we took that out of the budget. So, I just wanted to make that, you know.
Correct. We also had the leases. We also had $19,000 for sick day buyback in our budget also.
All right. Any questions for the fire chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Fire Chief.
Brad, DPW, could you come up, please? Give us a brief synopsis of your NVH and LRNS?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening, Brad.
And feel free to jump in if you have any questions. We'll start with local roads and streets, LRNS. And as Mr. Peters mentioned, motor vehicle highway, LRNS, both got a bump. The revenue's projected higher. So, as he mentioned, there was a little more money and I'm going to do my best to kind of break down where we put the money, where we thought would be best spent for the taxpayers. In LRNS, there was a total increase of $19,221. $10,000 of that we put into the appropriation for salt and gravel. Part of that is because I bid 100 extra tons this year of salt. I carried a little more into last year than I did this year. Last winter, we actually used quite a bit of salt. We had a lot of events, a lot of slick mornings where we went out and spread a lot of salt. So, salt's one of those things that when it gets here, the bad weather, it's like gold. You just don't want to be short on it and we have a nice facility to store it. So, I like to keep it as full as possible. So, the average price of the ton went down a little bit, like $1.52, but I did increase the amount that I bid. So, that's where some of that total went in. And then the other was $9,221 for a new appropriation for sidewalks. And you'll see that kind of reflected in the NVH budget as well, something we've never had, but I feel like it's a big need. I have a lot of times where I kind of pull that money from places where it's not ideal. Kind of like when Mr. Peters was talking about the sanitary and the storm. Sometimes you're, you're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul there. You don't really like doing that. So, you really want to pull the money from where it's supposed to be at. And sidewalks is something where, when you're working on roads and things and you encounter problems, whether it's a tree that's raised up a panel and I've got to go in to take the tree out and then I, I really need to replace that five or six panels of sidewalk to make it right for who lives there. A lot of times, I don't really have a pool of money dedicated for that. So, this would be something that would be nice for me as I, you know, pay bills hopefully for where it's supposed to come out of. So, that's where the two things came from. Those were the two increases. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I don't have a question about that. You mentioned compliance officer.
Yeah.
Could you touch a little bit on that?
Yeah, I know that whoever that ends up being is going to also handle a lot of the environmental complaints that we get, which obviously in the spring is mainly grasses. We get a lot of grass complaints. You know, we do work with the Board of Health and they do a really nice job of coming in when we have an issue and usually within a day or two, they address it. But that person, you know, and a lot of times we really lean on them because we just aren't staffed to handle some of that. But with a compliance dedicated person, it probably would be easier for us to handle some of that locally. I don't think I would want to take it all the way because they have a really nice structure on how they handle it. You know, they're, they're really obviously good at what they do. So, it would just give us an opportunity to dedicate this person to the stuff that I get a lot of calls on, mainly in the spring. I mean, it does kind of die down as you get more towards fall, but we still have stuff going on, people doing things they shouldn't be doing on their property. And I'll get a call and we go check it out. So, if we had a part-time person that could handle not only the fire inspections, but the things on the environmental side that I deal with, I think it would be really beneficial to us.
How about if we go into NVH, Brad?
NVH total increase was $116,042. And I'll just start. Category one of NVH is where the compliance officer went in and that was $25,000 that we put in for that. Whether that's one part-time person or two, that'll probably just be dependent on who we get and what their schedule's like and what their availability is. I just noted some of the little things I saw. Looks like the health savings went down about $4,500 and I know that, that kind of just goes year to year on what some of the costs are associated. We actually decreased the fuel by $20,000. So, that's where some of this, some of the stuff we added in actually is more than the grand total. The fuel went down. The thought process there was, this kind of reflects in the category four because there was a sidewalk, again, $40,000 for sidewalks. The schools had an opportunity in partnering with us for a safe route to school grant through the state. We thought and hope that we would get that. It actually, I think, got turned down for the most part from what I've heard. I don't think we're going to get it. We tried for three different areas, one around the high school, one around the intermediate school, and then another one around the middle school. And it was going to be an 80/20 project. So, it would have been nice to have gotten it. Anytime you can get, you know, federal money kicked in to help you out, it's great. That didn't happen. So, even though I'm probably going to be a little light on fuel, I can pull from that if I need to. And then I also have the utility because I work out of that budget as well, even though that's not advertised. So, just that fuel went down there. You'll notice that, that's kind of was why we put some of that money into that, hoping we would get it and could do the sidewalk project. In category three, the utilities and repairs and maintenance went down by about $5,000. Nothing directly impacted in one specific thing. It was just we were kind of gauging where we were typically with electric and things like that, trying to year by year, get those as tight as we could. And then category four was the big changes. We added a skid steer, which is a piece of equipment that we've wanted for a long time. Lease purchase on that would be about $15,000 a year. Most contractors have one. We've wanted one for a long time. It's something we could really use, not only in where I'm at, Public Works, but in the park system. And then we had a, a project that we did get, which was a sign inventory project. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but it was, it's going, I think it's going to be a real blessing. We, it's a 90-10 project with federal funding. So, really ideal, total of about $600,000. Our share will be $60,000. And that would replace all the street signs in the city that are deemed, well, they raised the standards on reflectivity is what they did. And most of our signs are not up to code. And the cost of the new signs is, is really enormous and the federal government knew that. They knew most places, we're not going to have the money to be able to do that and come up to code on their own. So, they put this out there. Did you want to?
$600,000 in street signs?
Mm-hmm. For 60 at our.
Actually, $685,000.
Yeah.
And it's mandated in 2015.
And that not only covers the reflectivity, but and some of you might know, they changed the, the way they want to do the street signs now too with the lettering and the sizes. So, we were going to be forced to really throw down some money to try to start getting where we needed to be. And it was approved. So, that was, you know, a huge win for us. So, that was put in there. I think it was $61,000 for that, but I think the total was $680,000. And then the other 40 for the sidewalks. So, that was the big changes in NVH. That was where a lot of the money went. So, I think they were all good places to put the money and I think the people appreciate it when we do stuff like that.
Questions for Public Works?
Phil, or Brad?
Yeah.
We increased the sewer rehab by 100,000 in the budget. Sidewalks are a total of 50 because 10 in one category and 40 in the other. You want to say anything about the position with Phil?
Yeah. And I didn't know how much you wanted me to get into sewage works. We don't talk usually too in-depth about it because it's, it's an unadvertised budget being the utility. But Phil Gerganis, real asset to my department. He's been here a long time. You know, the sanitary and the storm, as we were talking, are huge assets for the city and they are a separated system. And currently, we don't really pull in revenue for the storm. Phil is the guy that works directly with those two utilities and they're huge. We had a, we had an audit this year with IDIM and we really did well. We worked, Phil and myself with Wesler went in, did a, did a long audit with them. Overall, they're happy. But I think they, and I'm just throwing out some rough numbers. I think they said, right now, there's something like 148 cities or towns in Indiana that have stormwater systems. Of those 148, like 124 have a fee. Of the 24 that don't, 12 are currently working on a fee. So, we're really in the minority that, you know, we're not bringing in money to really maintain these systems. And we've done our best to kind of pull from different places when we could. But kind of going back to Phil, he's the guy that kind of keeps a lot of this going. He's just, he's somebody that I could use five days a week. He's currently part-time. So, I bumped his position up to full-time. As Wesler mentioned in the Board of Works meeting, we've got a sewer rehab on South Fourth. And what they said was, well, you can just have Phil do the inspection. You don't have to pay to have an engineer do the inspection, which is a huge blessing because engineering inspection's not cheap. So, he more than pays for himself and he can't do inspections when he's not here. So, he's somebody that I talked to. I was really interested in trying to getting, get him in here in a full-time position. Not only that, I just felt like down the road, structuring my department that way, there needs to be a position that directly ties into these sanitary and storm sewer systems. So, it's a sanitary and storm sewer operator is what the position's called. It's a $42,000 position, which is pretty much in line with what I think a commercial driver, A-level person. But this person, like Phil, is, is responsible for going to audits and things like that, which is, is really quite a bit of responsibility. And he's happy to do it. Like I said, overall, it's, it's a huge help to me having him there. And when something comes in on a day that he's not there, it's tough because he is the guy that goes out and not only clears these pipes, but he's, he deals with businesses. He went over to the school today because they were talking about adding on some classrooms. So, he's working the thumb now about how they can add sewers in to serve these classrooms they want to add. So, he's just really, I mean, I hate to use, you know, all these cheesy words, but he's really indispensable. I mean, he really is. I mean, the guy's, he's worth his weight in gold. So, it would be something that would be a real benefit to my department to be able to do that with him, to bring him on full-time.
And Brad, just to comment on that, the utility brings in the most revenue in the city and operates with a skeleton crew.
Yeah.
So, I think that needs to, you know, that's to your credit too, that you've been able to do what you've been able to do.
Questions for the Public Works Director? Well done over the weekend.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, well, we were happy. Everybody seemed to, it was a little cleaner this year. So, I don't know if it was just people being a little more conscientious of the new road or what, but we were pleasantly surprised Sunday morning when we came in to clean up. So, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
The Parks Department and the Parks Board submitted their budget to the clerk. So, I, if you have comments on that, I guess you could take it up with the clerk or the Parks Board.
I will just comment. Tom Hannam was very happy with his budget. And one thing I would like to portray to the council is, they started putting the plantings in today on Main Street. So, that's extra grass, extra plantings. Main Street. Uh, so that's extra grass, extra plantings someone's gonna have to care for. And I figured in one day a week for ten months out of the year when I did his budget, and I think still he came in at, uh, fourteen thousand four hundred and one dollars more than last year, and that's gonna be a big undertaking for, you know, what's gonna have to be done just on Main Street alone.
Dan, I have a comment.
Yes.
I, different than last year, I did not see, um, fireworks unless they're in a new category.
What, what was it?
Fireworks.
Uh, fireworks was taken out of the budget at his request.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Um, one last, uh, budget for the, uh, Civil City, and that is the City Court. This morning, uh, our Judge Andrew Wells, uh, got ahold of me and wanted to submit a new budget figure of a hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council. Um, I've, like I said before, I always have flashbacks like I'm in court again, up, uh, when I'm in front of you guys. Um, you're just not wearing robes. Uh, but I can't comment on the budget in your packet because, um, that's different than what I had put together on my worksheet. So, I've sent to, all of you should have a copy. Either I sent it to an email or gave it to you personally, and I talked to the mayor about it this morning. And, um, the line items are, are all fairly different except for the ones regarding employer health insurance and, you know, things like the benefits and, and those expenses where, um, those are set. And Dan, um, I took those numbers from Dan. Some of them went up, some went down, they fluctuate, whatnot. But overall, it's a, it's a cut from this year of a hundred dollars, and it's a cut from the proposal of six or seven hundred. I'm not, I don't remember the exact number of what the proposal was. Like I said, the proposal was off from what I had set forth. What I've done is the city, or excuse me, the court, every court case filed with the court, um, obviously has court costs associated with it, and those are all designated to go to different locations. Some, some stay in the city, some go to the state, and et cetera. There's two dollars that go, uh, to what's called the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund, and that is, um, a, uh, designated by state law that can only be spent on the court. Um, it's not something special for my court. All, they all have it. Um, so that gives us a nice pool of, I, I, I've just talked to Dan about it. I think there's what, like, four grand in there now. But that eliminates a lot of our expenditures on supplies, information technology, things like that. We don't need that. So, what I have done is I've, uh, uh, give, given the clerk a small raise. She's not had a raise in six years. Um, she is doing three times the caseload that she was two years ago.
Why?
And why? Because when I took over the court, we were doing a hundred and twenty-five cases a month. Now, we're doing upwards to five hundred. So, um, it's a big increase. And the City of Lawrence files all of their environmental cases with us now, and that has, um, those aren't electronically filed, um, because of the way the system works. So, they hand file those with paper, evidence, paper pleadings, and that, those cases alone take just as much time as doing all the electronic ticketing stuff. So, um, it's a great benefit for the city to have that. You'll see at the end of the year our numbers. Um, the, the revenue should be, um, significantly higher than last year. Um, but she's working hard, and, and she could run any, um, other court in this county, and they're all much bigger than mine. Um, so overall, the overall budget is a cut, but the, uh, but I've worked out a small increase for her, just because if we lost her, I don't know what I would do. I mean, I don't, I don't think I could get anybody to come in and run that thing at that rate. So, that's what I'm asking for. Um, and, uh, I talked to the mayor about it this morning, and so I think, uh, um, I think we are where we need to be.
We talked about the change in the figure. We didn't talk about the raise for the court clerk.
No, we talked about the overall budget.
Yeah.
Correct. But this, the, the thing, the, uh, the line items are all differently, and, and if you compare the two, you'll see where, where the money for that came from. So, I'm not increasing my budget. I am actually cutting from the, one, from the proposed that you had in your packet, and also from last year. So, I don't know, I have any other department that's cutting overall, and, um, if, if I, and if it wasn't, I, I'd rather give her a small raise than try to get a part-time person, which if we grow more and more, we would need a part-time person. I've already got interns coming in from the law school for free, um, helping and working, and, uh, that's working out great. I'd like to keep the current status quo, and, um, like I said, if she left, there's, I could not hire anybody. If you, if she went to, say, center township and did her same job, she's probably gonna be making like seventy grand. So, that's where that is. What I've done too is I've eliminated the education pay, um, that I have been getting, um, from my budget. So, that's where, that's where a lot of that has come from. That and some other supplies and things like that, so.
Andrew, I, uh, when I added up, I don't have a copy of this. I didn't get one of these.
I think it was on, I sent it to you on email at the end of last week, so it should've been on the email. And that's, I emailed most of, or the whole council as well.
So, anyway, it's a difference of six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay.
And-
From the proposal, yeah.
From the proposal. But my problem with it is, number one, I don't know what, health and dental right now, they're at an eight percent increase. Uh, health insurance is more than likely going up. You gotta have some fluff built in there.
And, and I took, and I actually took, if you, if you look at all the benefits and taxes and all those things that are worked in to, uh, uh, along the lines of employee expenses, I took the numbers from, once I saw the published budget was off of what I had put in, in the worksheet, I then took those numbers. So, that, those all were published. Some of them are increases, some of them are decreases, like Dan said, they're all have changed. And so, I'm assuming that if they, if those are okay because they're published. I started with those and worked from there and saw where I could move to, um, I mean, I, I think I heard Brad say, you know, he's trying to set up the, the budget to where it's workable for him in, in the future. That's what I'm trying to do too. I'm, I'm trying to eliminate things that I don't need and won't need, and trying to put them where they're better used, um, while also not increasing in overall expenditures.
And, and I commend you for that, but what I would rather you do is, we can always move that money around if you need it, but we can go before the council if it's a different category. If it's within the same category, we can, uh, move the money around. I'd rather you come back to the council at the end of next year and say, I saved a thousand dollars instead of six hundred and thirty-four dollars and-
Yeah.
Have to re-advertise the budget and everything else.
And, and I, I, I appreciate that. Um, I, but I, I'm, I'm asking that the, that the, um, that the line items be changed to the draft that I put for tonight. I, I mean, if, if the, uh, the statute provides that that, that those increases in some line items can be done, um, I, and I would ask that be done. I'm, that's, like I said, I, I'm, I'm dealing with pennies here compared to these guys. Um, so, I just wanna get it right. You know, one more year of not having it right, and I'm almost done with my term, you know? And so, uh, that's where I wanna, that's where I wanna go.
Can I ask a question? How much does it cost to advertise the budget? Because if you change it, won't you have to re-advertise?
More than the six hundred and thirty-four dollar difference.
If I have another meeting, why don't you say it to me and not spend it? And my second point I was gonna say is, you were talking about giving your clerk a raise, which puts certain people very hard. There's a lot of people in this city that work very hard, and I don't think they got raises.
Yep. Well, uh, you know, um, I can't speak for other people in the city. Um, I can speak for, uh, the budget that I've been charged by statute to handle. Um, I can speak with, for the court that I have been charged with by statute and by the City of Beech Grove to handle. And, um, I don't know of many, um, governmental entities for one, or, um, businesses for, uh, two, that are able to cut their budget and also give a valued employee a slight raise. I mean, you guys are talking about giving increases to fund new positions, which I'm all in favor. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that at all. And I'm coming to you and offering to cut my overall budget. Granted, it's not huge, but cut it, and, and, and give a valued employee a slight raise. That's not had one in six years. I mean, that court isn't where it is today without her. It's not in existence without her. So, um, I mean, be that as it may, this may have been resolved if, if we would've had more, uh, work on the front end, but that didn't happen. So, that's what I'm asking the council to do. I mean, I'm sorry that- There's an inconvenience, but-
Does not cost to republish with this new?
I believe it does. But my question to you being is, this is the first I've heard of a raise for Cindy, and I contacted you six weeks ago.
Exactly.
And it was never included in there.
It, it was, and, and I think it was the first or second week of July, you sent me an email, and you sent me the budget sheet to fill out, which is where I got this worksheet that you have. This is from Dan's original email he sent to me. I filled it out, and I can pull up the email if I need to from where-
No, no, no.
And the attachment saved on my, uh, still saved on my computer from mid-July, where I sent all the line items filled in the way they were. This was actually a bigger cut with still her raise, but then I saw the new numbers with benefits and whatnot, um, from the published budget. So, I thought, well, I should put those in because those are probably gonna be more in line than what was in two thousand and thirteen. So, the cut isn't as big as it originally was. I was, I wanna say another five hundred dollars or so. I'm, I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I am trying to put the court in the best position it can be. I've been doing that from day one, and, um, I, I think I'm the only one asking for a cut, but also taking care of my employees.
The clerk's office took a cut too, two years in a row.
Here, any other questions for the, uh, for the judge? Here's what I think, uh, your honor.
Yeah.
Um, the clerk advertised the budget, and we cannot exceed those fees that was advertised. And I'll get a legal opinion to see if I can do it, but I think I am within my executive authority to change the total figure to one hundred and fifteen thousand five forty if the council so desires.
Yeah.
Um, so, I don't feel too bad about that. Now, I will tell you that Cindy's salary is, is in the salary ordinance.
Hmm.
And if you want to change that bi-weekly pay, then the council is gonna have to do a, uh, amendment to the salary ordinance.
I, I understand that. And, uh, like, i- if, if, if the council, like, if, if you're, if, if you're in support and the council is willing to, to, uh, adopt this version, then the, the funding will be there for, for that.
It's not if I support it or I don't support it.
Well, I, I understand. Sorry, yeah.
Whatever the council wants to do.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I apologize, so. Um, but, yeah, if, if, if the council adopts what I put forward, then, then the, the, the funding will be there for that, uh, amendment to the, uh, salary ordinance.
But, uh-
Obviously, if it's not, if it's not changed, it won't be there. Everything will stay the same, so.
Yeah. Any other questions from the, for the judge?
How, yeah, how do you operate without any office supplies?
Like I said earlier, we have a fund that's, that is outside of the tax levies. It is a, it is a two-dollar fee that is on court costs. So, we have more than, I mean, I think our office supplies were five hundred or a thousand dollars in the budget originally. We have four, four to five thousand dollars currently in the fund that every case that's filed gets two more dollars put into. So, that's a revolving, um, separate fund out of the budget that we purchased those things out of. So, I don't need those line items in here, and, and no one in the future is going to need it unless they take that fund away, which they're not gonna do because all the courts in the state run, run a lot of their systems off that money. Uh, so, there's no need to have, I guess the way I look at it is, if I don't need something, I'm gonna cut it out, make it more efficient so there's not, someone down the road can't dump a whole bunch of money in there and play shenanigans with that, with that line item that's not needed. Okay? So, um, since we have that designated, statute only allows it to be spent on certain things. It's only allowed to be spent on, um, those items that I've cut.
All right. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
There's no other presentations, and so what I'll do is I'll ask the clerk to, uh, read General Ordinance Number Eighteen, Two Thousand Thirteen for first reading, included in the paragraph I would like to have entered into the record, the adopted, proposed adopted budget as well.
Okay. Ordinance, uh, or resolution for appropriations and tax rate, ordinance number eighteen. Be it ordained, the City of Beech Grove Common Council that for the expenses of Beech Grove Civil City for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beech Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form Four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the City of Beech Grove Common Council. The fund name is general, adopted budget, seven million two hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Debt service, two hundred and four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three. Fire pension, three hundred and eighty-five thousand four seventy-nine. Police pension, five fifty-six three twenty-six. Local roads and streets, five oh nine two twenty-one. Motor vehicle highway, eight hundred and eleven thousand seven seventy-nine. Continuing education, fourteen thousand. Rainy day fund, a hundred and ninety-three thousand nineteen dollars.
Questions or comments from board members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve, uh, ordinance number eighteen on first reading only.
I'll make second motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. This will be carried over for second and third reading on the October seventh meeting. General Ordinance Number Nineteen, Two Thousand Thirteen is up for first reading only pursuant to the public library. Liz?
Greetings. Um, okay. I won't like go through line by line like I did last year. We've all been through this. Um, I'll just, I have a couple talking points, and then, um, and if you guys have questions, just ask. Um, in personnel services, which is the first category, this is all in operating. The library has three funds. I'll be doing all of them. Um, it, um, has decreased, um, overall, um, in supplies. We've also, I've also decreased in supplies. Um, services and charges, and these are things like, um, professional services. So, this would be, we don't have an IT person on staff. So, this is, um, you know, our computer services, you know, if something breaks, we have to have, you know, someone come in. Um, we have an outside cleaning service that, insurance on the building, not insurance for the people, but building insurance. Um, that is actually increased, and this also includes things like utilities. So, I felt it was a good idea to increase because you never know what rate-wise that'll do. Um, the capital outlays, there's been the most increases. Um, that is to increase the book budget, um, both print books and, um, ebooks or electronic books, um, and CDs and other AV materials. And also an increase to equipment and furniture. And this is for the replacement and upgrade of most of the co- public computers and the circulation computers, which the staff use to check people in and out. These, um, uh, these are in dire need, are, of, uh, replacing and probably should've been done years ago, but, um, again, I've only been there two years. Um, and also, um, this would include a, uh, addition of another T-one line. Um, our computer use for the public computers continues to increase. Um, you know, you hear all the time that people aren't using libraries, but, you know, um, if you come over in the afternoons, you see our computers are- you come over in the afternoons, you see our computers are pretty full. People use them for searching for jobs and all of that. And I, I go over about this same time of year with the company called ENA, and they have a usage chart. And last year, they had said, you know, your usage is pretty high. You're probably going to need to add, you know, another T-1 line. Well, I held off, and we weren't able to do it this year, so I'm sure that we'll need to do it in '14. And there also may need to be some upgrades and repairs to the phone system. We've been having some issues with that as well. I've kind of like, kind of like everybody else was saying, I've taken from one place to, you know, to pay to get things fixed and whatnot. And then, um, last year, the whole, the whole, the whole worksheet looks different. There's now a separate, in operating, there's a whole separate line for debt service. I have budgeted the same amount I did last year of 130,000. I don't think that we're going to need that, because the debt services fund is supposed to be fully funded, but I thought that was supposed to happen this year, and they put it off a year. But I think it's important to have it in there just in case. Debt service, um, the debt service for the library actually goes down by $1,000, because we only, um, we have two payments of 175,500. This year, they were two payments of 176,000. LRF, which is the Library Improvement Reserve Fund, this is not, this is a fund that the library, like, self-funds, kind of like the judge was talking about. It's not, property taxes isn't going into LRF. But if I, if I don't ask for appropriations for LRF now, it's difficult to get it later. I, um, you had approved the LRF, the $25,000 for LRF last year, or for this year, I keep saying last year, and I haven't had to use it. It's kind of like a reserve fund. It's, it's one that I don't, you know, because you spend it down to nothing, and it's not going to be there. But to me, it's important to have it appropriated, because it's hard, I mean, it's, it's a process. I mean, you guys would have to see me again and all of that. So, I guess I'd rather do it on the front end, but it's not a fund that I would, that I use. We haven't spent any out of it for '13, and I don't plan to spend it. But I did have to spend, the library did have to spend out of it for '12, just because of the, some of the financial things when I took over. So, anyway, um, any questions? Comments?
There's nothing in here for cost of living adjustment, is there?
Um, we, I budgeted a slight increase for the three full-time staff people. I don't know that that'll be able to happen. They haven't had raises in, though, as, you know, I realize everyone's not had, everyone's in the same boat. So, I budgeted for it. I don't know that it will, I mean, that we'll really be able to do it, you know, once we get the numbers. But, any other questions?
Counsel, counsel members have questions for the librarian? If not, General Ordinance Number 19, 2013 is up for first reading, and I'll defer to the clerk to read it into the record under the same format, please.
Ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates, ordinance number 19. Be it ordained by the Beech Grove City Council that for the express, for the expenses of Beech Grove Public Library for the year ending December 31, 2014, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the Beech Grove Public Library, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Beech Grove City Council. Fund, general, 994,000. Debt service, 351,000. Library improvement reserve, 25,000.
Any comments or questions from board members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 19 on first reading only.
I'll make said motion, sir.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. This will be carried over for second, third reading on the next meeting, October the 7th. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
General Ordinance Number 20, 2030, or, excuse me, 2013 pursuant to the salary ordinance for 2014 is up for first reading, and I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety, please.
Do you do any additional appropriations? I'm going to do it after. Oh, okay. City of Beech Grove Salary Ordinance, ordinance number 20, 2013. Ordinance number 20, 2013 is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, in the year 2014, be it ordained by the Common Council for the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. Section 1, that from and after the first day of the year 2014, the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees of the City of Beech Grove be fixed as follows. Do you want to read through each one?
Yes, please.
Mayor's office, the mayor from corporation, 1,210.85. Mayor from sewage, 806.46. Mayor's assistant, 1,603.46. Keep going or stop on that one?
I'll keep going now.
Clerk treasurer's office, from corporation, 1,233.11. From sewage, 700.23. Administrative human resource clerk, 1,153.85. Full-time clerk, 1,153.85. Part-time, full-time office manager, up to 14 per hour. Part-time clerk, up to 12 per hour. Board of Sanitation and Public Works and Safety, members each, 96.15. Crossing guards each, up to 22.55 per hour. Newly hired crossing guards each after January 1, 2014, up to 15 per hour. City of Beech Grove Common Council, council members each, 134.50.
I'll read this one. Page 2, Department of Public Works, motor vehicle and highway and sewage. Director of Public Works, 2,674.04. Building clerk, 1,605.15. Part-time sewage office clerk, up to 12 per hour. Public Works secretary, part-time, up to 12 per hour. Janitorial services, part-time, up to 12 per hour. Sanitary stormwater supervisor, 1,615.38. Sanitary stormwater helper, part-time, up to 12 per hour. And please insert this, counsel. Position pay for street commissioner only, 293.70. Compliance, up to 15 per hour. New position, 25,000 maximum per year. Mechanic, 1,748.88. Commercial driver A, 1,0673.62. Truck driver maintenance B, 1,604.73. Helper number 1C, 1,444.62. Helper number 2D, 1,370. Helper number 3E, 1,279.77. Department of Parks and Recreation slash Parks Board, Department of Parks director, Parks general...
45.
Sorry. Parks general staff, part-time, up to 12 per hour. Hornet Park Community Center faculty, or facility slash special events coordinator, part-time, up to 15 per hour. Hornet Park general staff, part-time, up to 12 per hour. Senior Citizen Center, community service coordinator, 1,336.31. Transportation slash administrative coordinator, 1,020. General staff, part-time, up to 12 per hour. For the following certification, add commercial driver's license for bus, 19.23 per pay.
Fire department, master firefighter, third year, 2,056.81. Firefighter, second year, 1,956.27. Probationary firefighter, 1,0671.12. First-class firefighter for pension base only, add 2,000 for a total of 54,389. For the following positions, add chief, 865.38. Operations chief, 673.08. Battalion chief, 384.62. Captain, 173.08. Lieutenant, 153.85. EMS duty officer, 57.69. Engineer, 38.46. Firefighters with paramedic certification, 96.15. Firefighters with EMT certification, 28.85. Civilian emergency medical technicians, first-year civilian emergency medical technician, 1,362.72. Second-year civilian medical technician, 1,558.68. Third-year civilian medical technician, 1,588.33. Civilian paramedics, first-year civilian paramedic, 1,558.68. Second-year civilian paramedic, 1,752.06. Third-year civilian paramedic, 1,864.23. Second ambulance contractual service, not to exceed 159,000 per year.
I'll get it. Police department, master patrolman, third year, 2,117.8. Patrolman, second year, 1,956.27. Probationary patrolman, first year, 1,720.35. Patrolman first class for pension base only, add 2,000 for a total of 54,389. For the following positions, add chief, 865.38. Deputy chief, 673.08. Major of operations, 480.77. Major, 384.62. Captain, 173.08. Lieutenant, 153.85. Sergeant, 38.46. Graduate of Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, 115.38. Detective, 57.63. Civilian...
57.69.
Detective, 57.69. Thank you. Civilian general staff, chief's assistant, 1,605.15. Animal control officer, 1,593.27. Receptionist, 1,268.69. Detective secretary, part-time, up to 14.19 per hour. IDAX, part-time, up to 15 per hour. City court judge, 1,615.38. Court clerk, 1,605.15. Section 2 educational incentive benefit, associate's degree, 500. Bachelor's degree, 1,500. Master's degree, 2,500. This is a bonus in addition to an employee's base salary and will be split into equal amounts over 26 pay periods. Eligibility requirements apply. An employee must be employed with the city for a period of one year prior to applying for this credit. The college or university must be accredited. Copies of transcripts and degrees must be presented, and all documentation must be verified. Elected officials are not eligible for this credit. This benefit is only available to full-time employees.
Longevity benefit. Each full-time employee of the City of Beech Grove shall receive a longevity increment of 100 per year for each full year or major portion thereof, prior service to the City of Beech Grove as of January 1, 2013. This benefit only applies to the employee's most current employment with the city. Employees that resign or leave employment with the city and return to employment with the city cannot receive this benefit based on past employment history. This benefit will be calculated from the most recent hire date. Elected officials are not eligible for this benefit. This benefit is only available to full-time employees. Section 4 Clothing allotment benefit. Each member of the fire and police department shall receive a clothing allotment of 800 per year and two installments of 400 each. The first installment shall be paid with the first paycheck in June or before, and the second installment shall be paid within the first paycheck in December or before. The Board of Public Works and Safety shall maintain the discretion to annually establish and modify the amount of the benefit. Civilian employees are not eligible for this benefit. This benefit is only available to full-time employees. Section 5 Fire Department duty pay benefit. Each member of the fire department shall earn, in addition to their regular pay, 12 per day for each duty day expected to work, vacation days excluded. This ordinance number 20, 2013 supersedes any previous ordinance or employee handbook written by the City of Beech Grove. The rates for wages shown in this ordinance number 20, 2013 are for positions listed and are for the maximum biweekly rates. The biweekly rates are subject to approval by the Department of Local Government and Finance of a levy and tax rates sufficient to fund them. This ordinance number 20, 2013 will take effect January 1, 2014.
Thank you, Dan. The salary ordinance has been read, and the floor is open for questions or comments.
Dan, I have a question here.
All right.
Under the part-time, full-time office manager, is that a position that you're going to fill this year?
If I would, I would fill it within the office personnel now that would be there. I don't know for positive that'll happen, but I want that option in 2014 if I choose to do that.
Okay. I have three amendments. First one is the move the mayor's assistant back down to what it was originally supposed to be last year, which is 1384.62.
I'm on 13.
I'll make these one at a time.
Does that include longevity in that?
Uh, does the 1603.46 include it? I didn't think it did.
No, this is just base salary.
Just base salary, okay.
Yeah, that's just base salary.
We will, I have to do, if you have three amendments, we'll have to do them separately.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor to reduce the mayor's assistant's salary from 1,603.46 to 1,384.62. Need a motion to approve.
Mayor, may I, real quickly? What's, we've got, well, first off, I'll hear your other amendments. I'm sure you bring other ones up, but I'm assuming this will be the only employee in this city who we propose to get a pay decrease. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, it's actually a, a pay decrease from last year. However, two years ago, it stays the same.
But she's getting a pay decrease from last year, is that right?
From last year.
Okay. Very good. You know, we've got a female over the age of 40, and I guess the employment litigator just kind of, that brings about a red flag. You know, what's the articulated reason for it? I mean, if there's a legitimate reason for this, let's hear it.
My reason was the same reason as last year's, because that position is a position, when it was first initiated, to be 36,000 per year. And that's the, that, that position should stay the same regardless of who steps into it. If somebody's been here 25 years, you don't go...
When, when was it first initiated at that?
This posi, this position was first initiated under the Dilke administration.
There's been a mayor's assistant back when Joe Wright was here.
Right.
Who was paid almost 50,000.
And then they were both let go. The position was eliminated.
But then when it was brought back...
It was brought back at 36,000 a year.
Ed, is that what you recall? Ed, is that what you recall?
I don't think anyone has started that position at that price, that salary.
Let me tell you some things that are, I think that can't be disputed here tonight. Number one, there are two employees who hold similar positions in this city who make more money than Julie. Julie's been here almost twenty years. So we're gonna essentially punish a twenty-year employee? Why? I mean, again, I guess it just, the lawyer has to come out and me and just, you know, if it raises a red flag for somebody over the age of forty and a female.
This is not, this is not a, anything against Julie. This is, she moved from the clerk's office, making the money that she's making right now, into this position who was assigned thirty-six thousand dollars per year by ordinance in 2012. She knew going in that this position was thirty-six thousand dollars per year. There is no way that i-if I move to a position, if I go from doctor to janitor, I'm not gonna get doctor pay. I'm gonna get janitor pay. This is the same, same kind of scenario.
For a twenty-year employee? When Mayor Wright's Assistant made fifty thousand dollars? I don't know, folks. I mean...
What's the legal ramification?
Well, legal ramification is, is that, I don't know if Julie will ever do this, but she could go to the EOC and file a charge. You know, people, there's a certain group of people in this community who complain about legal bills. And I can't control some things. It's just, it's just the nature of the business. This one can be controlled. This is, quite frankly, unbecoming of this council.
Why would it be unbecoming of this council?
To punish a twenty-year employee?
Nobody's punishing her.
She's getting a pay decrease?
Right. She knew that when she took the position.
I think reasonable minds could differ.
And Craig, I was going to ask every single question that you just asked as well. You know, why, why, why is this single sole employee's salary being reduced?
How many people got a pay raise last year? Except Julie.
John, nobody, there was no cost of living. There hasn't been a cost of living adjustment in five years.
When she changed position, she kept her salary going from, that position paid thirty-six thousand and then she moved to a, it was, that's what Joey, that's what Joey made, thirty-six thousand.
Okay, but what, what, how did his, when did his salary come into play?
You keep shaking your head. No, that's not what that position paid.
I never shook my head.
That is what...
I'm saying, when did his salary come into play? That's all I'm asking.
When he took the position of Mayor's Assistant.
Was the, and before, I wasn't around then. I mean, I was here, but I didn't come to the meetings. Was, was there a position before he took that? Was that position not here?
It had been shut down under...
Well, a lot of things have been shut down under Joe.
But we're trying to compare apples to apples. We go from Joe to Terry to this administration.
How long had that, does anybody know how long that position had been here before it was shut down? Does anybody?
I don't know how long they've had us, a Mayor's Assistant.
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Well, Eldon had it for thirty-two years. So I don't know if Warner had an assistant or not. Joe had, Joe had an assistant. But anyway, what I'm, what I'm gonna advise you is, what legal ramifications is the council taking if they do this?
Well, I mean, I think we're subjecting ourselves to, again, an unnecessary legal expense. You know, assuming she were to proceed under a Title VII or an Age Discrimination Act claim, a city this size, I mean, we could be hit with, worst-case scenario, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar compensatory punitive damage award, not including attorney fees and not including the fact that, you know, our insurance company, I think there was, early in the year, we talked about how Walker, basically, since we had some longevity with him, let us continue our insurance. I mean, these are things that they consider when, when we go to renew our insurance. And again, this can be avoided, this is...
Are you sure she even has a case? I mean, she got a raise last year. The only person in Beach Grove that got a raise. I mean, you know, why don't we ask her for the money back that we gave her last year?
Can we ask what the difference is between, what was the Age Discrimination Act, please?
Oh, I don't know. We have to add it up.
It's about six thousand, maybe.
Two hundred and nineteen dollars per pay. So when we passed this last year, did we say this is just a one-year thing or what? No. I mean, I guess I'm missing the point.
It was, it was tied to three-three. We tried amending it three times. It was tied to a three-three with an executive decision it was passed.
Do we assume personal risk?
Well, yeah, that's another thing.
Because this question, let's just cut through the chase. Is this something that's personal?
It's nothing personal. It's just, it's, it's straightforward. You think it's personal, it's, I mean, it's just like I said, you don't go from a doctor to a janitor and make a doctor's pay. This is the same scenario. She was in the clerk's office. She didn't have to go to the mayor's office. But she knew going in that that position paid thirty-six thousand dollars a year. This was brought, this was brought forth, the salary ordinance, last time, that it needed to be changed exactly what it was. There were several things that needed to be changed. And this was one of them. I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
It was, it was, it was passed on executive decision. It came to a three-three tie and Dennis being the, the mayor being the tiebreaker.
Well, and if I may just say, I think we ought to take the name Julie out of it and just say that position.
I agree.
I think that makes it sound like it's personal. That position, last year it was raised. Be that as it may, if we vote for this decrease, she will be the only employee in the City of Beach Grove who's, that position will be the only position in the City of Beach Grove who is getting a decrease in their pay.
My life here, I'm the only position that got a raise, too.
My question is, Anthony, on your other two changes, what are they?
Well, let's do this amendment first.
Well, I'd like to know what they are. Are they also decreases?
One of them is a removal.
And is there any increases?
Uh, one.
And what?
It's exactly what the judge presented tonight.
So on one hand, you're wanting to decrease somebody and on the other hand, you're wanting to increase somebody.
And the one you wanna decrease is a twenty-year employee.
Let's do the, councillor had an amendment on the, on the, that he forwarded, one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents per pay for the Mayor Assistance. He made the motion, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we have a show of hands or a...
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, it fails, um, what was it, about five to two?
Five to two.
Five to two. Anthony, you had another motion?
Yes. The part-time, full-time officer-manager in the clerk's office, I'd like to delete.
There's a motion made by Councillor Davidson to delete the part-time, full-time officer-manager position in the clerk's office. I need a second, please.
Is this the position we just talked about?
Yes.
That you wanna do that?
Yes. It's not a new position. It would just be...
I just wanted to make sure I was on the...
No. What was that again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was under the impression this was a new position.
No, it is not. Wait a second. It is a new position per se title. It's still being filled by someone that is presently there. It's not a new hire to do this.
Okay, I'm sorry, I withdraw my...
Okay. That is withdrawn. The third motion, councillor?
The third motion is exactly what the judge had stated earlier, is the move to change the court clerk to sixteen fifty-three, eighty-five.
Amen. There's a motion on the floor to raise the court clerk's bi-weekly salary to one thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. I need a second, please.
I'll second.
All those in favor will do it singularly?
It's a conversation.
All right.
Go ahead.
I would like...
I'm sorry.
When we, when we, when the judge had spoke of this, you said that you could do this by executive decision or is this the way we need to do this?
No, this is the way we need to do this.
Thank you.
Councillor Davidson made a motion. Councillor Jennings, second. We'll do it by singularly, vote, starting with Dave.
Yes.
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 Okay, passes seven to nothing. And then we will carry these amendments over. And now I need a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Twenty, 2013, on first reading only.
Mayor, I have one question. I just looked at, and the judge is still here. On the one budget form we have, it says, um, that's under the Judge Department Head's salary. Is that, you're talking about the judge?
That's the judge's base salary.
Okay, we've got, got published forty-two thousand. And it looks like on his budget, he started forty-two thousand, I...
That's a, I just realized that before the meeting started. I didn't have the salary ordinance when I was putting that together. So I went off my pay stub and I was getting the education benefit or incentive, which I'm not getting next year. And I didn't realize that had been pulled off the salary ordinance. So that number probably is a little higher than what is in the salary ordinance. So if you pass the salary ordinance, that'll just hold my base at what it is now. So that's why there's a discrepancy and I apologize for that, but I didn't have that form earlier, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the General Ordinance Number Twenty, 2013, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
And we'll do it singularly, vote, starting to my right.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes. Yes.
Six to one. We will carry this over to the meeting on October the seventh for second and third reading. Last order of new business is additional appropriation ordinance Number Twenty-One, 2013, for the 2013 budget. Jeff, could you, would you like to briefly comment on this, please, before we take action? This is LLE.
Yeah. Obviously, in your annual budget process, you do this exercise to approve your spending. You approved an amount for 2013 for continuing education. They now need more money. They do have sufficient funds in there to pay for this. This is another one of those segregated funds that can only be expended for the items that are proposed before you. So you can't spend it on anything else and it doesn't help anything else. If you would like them to spend these monies for more continuing education, you could approve it. It's been advertised and is ready for your action. As to the specific expenditures that'll be made, I would assume that would have to come from the police chief.
All right. Questions for the financial consultant? All right, thank you, Jeff. If not, I'll ask the clerk to read the appropriation ordinance Number Twenty-One into the record, please.
Additional appropriation ordinance, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, Section One, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit to follow in additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred or reduced out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Local law enforcement, other services and charges, five thousand dollars. Total local law enforcement fund, five thousand dollars, adopted this seventh day of October, 2013.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the additional appropriation ordinance Number Twenty-One, 2013, on first reading only.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. They'll carry over for second and third reading at the October seventh meeting. That concludes the agenda for new business. Council comments, beginning on my far right. Dave?
No comment.
John?
It was a wonderful, successful Fall Festival. Officers did a great job. Seemed like everybody was in compliance and was fairly well behaved and I'm glad to hear that the trash pickup wasn't near as bad as it should, has been in years past. Good crowd, good weather. Hope everybody enjoyed it. That's all I have.
Dave?
Yeah, enjoyed the Fall Festival. Enjoyed a couple new business eateries that are out there that everybody should try. I also want to announce that there's a Beach Grover. He's five years old and he's been in two Major League Baseball documentaries. And I will be enjoying to go to Cooperstown, New York with my grandson, the twenty-seventh of September. And every Major League Baseball team enters a film into what they call the Major League Baseball Film Festival. He was in one last year. The Reds liked him so much, they brought him back. And it was supposed to be called From the End to the Beginning, basically about how a baseball team operates. The film documentary, the producer liked my grandson so much, the film is gonna be called Eddie the Fan. And out of thirty teams, there's only eight left and his was one of them. And they picked the winner that weekend. It's a pretty neat moment. And that's it.
Thanks, Dave. Anthony?
Just ditto John's comments. And also, there was a event that happened...
Seventh of September.
Seventh of September, that involved Mr. Scott Seach, who's the owner of Beach Grove Bowl. He organized a mass painting of the big, up at Amtrak. I know Dan and Dennis and Dave Harrison, he was, he, they were all there as well as myself. And I just wanted to thank them and thank Brad and his guys for getting all that stuff together and out there keeping us, shutting down that lane and keeping us safe while we're doing that. And thanks to Scott Seach for organizing that. Thanks.
Ed?
I will, you know, what, thank you, since it's about Scott and the citizens out there doing the walk. It looks good and need more... Main Street is looking fantastic. I saw them start to put the plants in and the lights look excellent. And thank you for coming.
Mary?
Kind of touched on everybody's, about the Fall Festival. People were very civil and everything seemed to go really well. No incidents that I heard of. Parade was awesome. Everybody enjoyed that. Congratulations, Dave, on your grandson and that documentary. That's, I can see we're very proud of him and that's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for your input. I wouldn't be one of these budgets if there was a gun to my head. For all of you that did that, I don't, I admire you. Would not do it. And we look forward to getting all this taken care of.
Kathy?
All been said, agreed. Thank you all.
Thanks, and I'll defer to the clerk for an announcement.
Okay, this coming Saturday at nine AM, we're going to have a surplus auction. There's gonna be vehicles, just a lot of different things from all the departments in the city. It's this Saturday, nine twenty-one, 2013, at nine AM. At the police station, there'll be parking in the fire station. Am I wrong on that?
Wait a minute. What time?
It's being advertised as ten-thirty.
Sorry, I told him the wrong time.
All right. The auction will start at ten-thirty on Saturday.
I was gonna buy that car!
But anybody that'd like to attend that, they're always fun. But anybody that'd like to attend that, they're always fun.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:52 p.m. We will meet again on Monday, October the 7th. Thank you very much and have a nice...